I would like to bring to order the regular, well, this is actually the reorganization of council meeting for Monday, September 7, 2019. Roll call, please, Mr. Lauer.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
President.
Mr. Arcury.
Here.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
All right, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the election of chairman.
Chairman, I nominate Frank Cozer.
Second.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Monica Merrill.
We have two, I guess we'll have to do this by.
Mr. Ball? Yes.
So, any other nominations? All right. All of, so, all right, Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Ball?
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Arcury?
Mr. Cozer.
Mr. Steigl?
This is Merrill.
This is Merrill.
I'll vote for myself.
All right, that sounds like you are now chairman, Mr. Cozer. It's the honor, Gavin, thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, fellow council members, for your confidence. It's, it is humbling, and I promise you we'll do everything we can to move these meetings along quickly every Monday, every other Monday night. So, the next item is election of a vice chairman. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Dave Ball.
Do I have a second?
Well, sir.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Gary Stevel.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll have a real call back. Lauer? Mrs. Merrill?
Gary Stevel.
Mr. Steigl?
Uh, my son.
Mr. Currie?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Cozer?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Lawrence?
Mr. Steigl.
Four, three. Four, three, yes. The next is appointment of a personnel appeals committee. Okay, and last year, it was myself, Monica, and Mrs. Merrill, and Mr. Ball. Are you all willing to serve again this year?
I am.
I am.
Somebody make a motion to that.
Do we nominate the, this is.
Actually, that's an appointment by the chairman of the council. Okay, so I will appoint Mr. Arcury, and Mr. Ball, and Mrs. Merrill to the personnel appeals committee. Next is my personal favorite, appointment of the representative to the Shaycock Board of Directors.
Does he point out or do I make this?
Oh, does this mean I can finally get out of this?
Yeah, actually, you can't get out of this.
It's the only reason I really wanted to be chairman. Is there anyone who has an interest in being the Shaycock reps for this year? Now, I will say, and I've done it for the last three years, you do get a free meal out of it, although I will admit that I was a little derelict last year, I think I only made it to three meetings, so.
Oh, if that's all the requirements.
So, is there anyone who's interested?
I did my turn at that for a few years, and you're right, they're a lovely group, and you do get a meal, but unfortunately, my time won't allow me to volunteer.
I've made my duty to it, and I don't know that I would necessarily agree with your assessment of the group, but.
Those are our fellow elected officials.
Well, there being no volunteers, and I not wanting to be the one to put this upon anybody, I will appoint myself to be the representative for Shaycock for another year.
Now, you, how many years have you done?
I've done it three.
That's torturous enough.
I'll do it for one more year, and.
I'll, I'll do it. If I don't have to make three meetings, I can beat your record.
Okay. All right, well.
One of them could be a golfer, golfer, that too.
Oh, yeah, there is a golf.
Zirconist attendance?
It does, yes, at the Maypole every year. Now, that, that could count for one of your ladies.
Where's the golf thing?
Neville.
Ah, even better. All right, I'll do it. I haven't done it, I haven't done my time. This is only a one-year commitment.
I will be an alternate.
Okay, well, then, Mr. Berkowitz, I'll appoint you as the Shaycock representative. We also need a Shaycock alternate, and I will do that, I'll be the Shaycock alternate. I will appoint myself as the Shaycock alternate, so we'll just flip to on for this year.
Thank you, Gavin.
Next, appointment of a township solicitor.
I know one.
Does anyone have any comments with regard to the township solicitor?
Nope. Well, I move that we appoint John Smith as our township solicitor.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the appointment of the township consulting engineer.
I move the gateway engineers be retained as the township's consulting engineer.
I'll second.
And that Lennon Smith Solret engineer be retained as the township's alternate consulting engineer, and that traffic planning and design be retained as the township's traffic engineer. So that would be two B.C. indeed.
I'll second all that. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to suggest something. I'm in favor of appointing them, I would just ask that if we get into a situation where Gateway is backed up and cannot respond to an inquiry, like we had in a recent situation with the property on, at Petersburg Center, maybe we need to look at the alternate engineer if they can be done in a more timely manner. I would say perhaps enlist them more often since we didn't use them at all last year.
I have no problem with that.
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next, we have appointment of the cable, to the cable television board. So, there is one term that is up, and that is Richard Sandella. He has indicated that he is interested in continuing to serve. There's currently a vacancy, and we'll be advertising for that position, and council will have an opportunity to interview people at a future date.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Sandella to a three-year term to run through two thousand, January 2022.
Give a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we perhaps advise the school district, and perhaps that would be another committee where a high school student might be a good potential candidate if they're interested, they have a very robust media program over there, just to open it up for them.
That is a good idea, I think the student representative on the EQT, so our quality board has certainly have been beneficial. Next, we have an appointment to the construction appeals board. The construction appeals board, Ms. Bowman's term is up, the construction board had no cause to meet last year, Ms. Bowman has indicated that she would be willing to be reappointed.
I take some exceptions, the action that she participated in this past year, where I would have considered her action to be in conflict with her role and representation. Anybody else have those similar feelings?
I do. I do as well.
I'd like to explore finding another candidate.
We can do that.
I move that we table the appointment and advertise for alternate candidates.
We can do that.
I'll second that, if you need a motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
This is to table.
To table.
Yeah, we have to move the table.
And to.
And to open it.
And open it for letters of interest.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is the appointment to the environmental quality board. You have two positions that, that need to be filled, one is currently, the member is Ms. Cribs, the other is Mr. Hollitt, both of them are seeking reappointment. I know that Blaise's attendance isn't what council would normally like to see, but he has, in fact, recently retired, and during that year of retirement, he has traveled some. He intends to, to continue to have attendance that, that is more representative of what he has done in the past.
Well, I move that we appoint, reappoint Amanda Cribs and Blaise Hollitt to the environmental quality board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
Can I inquire just one, on one, it looks like one individual attended three out of twelve meetings, but I don't see any, was she appointed late, or?
No, actually, I've been talking to Mr. Hurson, she's had scheduling problems related to work. If you want, I can have a discussion with her to find out whether or not that problem's going to resolve.
No, I mean, I'm assuming that if, if, if Mr. Hurson's okay with it, I just thought if there was some reason why it wasn't.
And one of the things about the environmental quality board, it's a little different than a number of the other boards, is that not only do they meet for the purposes of discussing things, they actually are engaged in doing things, so like cleanup day, that they're engaged in doing that. And so, what Mr. Hurson has expressed to me is that even where you see attendance that may not be what you would hope at this meeting, that people are active and participating.
That's fine, I just, I just was wondering.
Well, I think that makes a difference, absolutely, so, I appreciate you do that.
Okay, next, appointment to the library board. There are two positions that are up for reappointment, one is Carol Adler, the other is Frank Danco, both of these individuals have indicated an interest in seeking reappointment.
I'll move that we reappoint Carol Adler and Frank Daniel to the library board.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is an appointment to the park, two appointments to the parks and recreation board. You have two individuals on the park and rec board, Mr. Conmany and Mr. Rafferty, whose terms were up, both of them have indicated an interest in being reappointed. Mr. Rafferty is an appointment, is a recommendation from the school board, Dr. French has asked that we, although they're, from an administrative standpoint, they're very happy with his service on, on the board, she wants to have an opportunity for the school board to ratify them back.
Beforehand?
Yes, and so what she's asking is that, that in that case, that appointment be done at our next meeting.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Well, can we, sorry, no, no, but I was going to ask, can we appoint pending?
Yes, you can do that as well.
That's what I was going to do, I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint William, is it Canaby?
Canaby.
Is that, is that, how's it?
Canaby.
Canaby, I apologize, to the parks and rec board, and that we reappoint Mr. Rafferty, contingent upon the school, the school board's approval, and in lieu thereof, then we'll just advertise.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is an appointment to the Peters Creek sanitary authority. You have one individual whose term is up, that's Christopher Levy, he has indicated that he would be interested in continuing to serve on the Peters Creek sanitary authority.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Levy to the Peters Creek sanitary authority board for a term that will expire January 2024.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is an appointment to the Peters Township sanitary authority. There's one position of this up that is currently held by Eric Grimm, he's indicated an interest in continuing to serve, I noted here that he's attended eight out of twelve meetings, I spoke to the manager of the sanitary authority, he finds Mr. Grimm to be a dedicated board member, and also brings good insight into their decision-making process, and it's his preference that Mr. Grimm be retained on the board.
I'll make a motion that we appoint, reappoint Eric Grimm to the Peters Township sanitary authority for a term that will expire January 2024.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next, we have three appointments to the planning commission. Two of those are for regular membership, Conrad, I'm going to mispronounce his last name.
Celepas.
Celepas, Dave Wiley.
Karfilius.
And then Theodore Karfilius is a, is an alternate member, there's a vacancy on that board right now, and we will be advertising to fill that vacancy.
I'm going to make a motion that we reappoint Conrad Celepas and Dave Wiley, and as members of the planning commission for a term, for a four-year term expiring January 2022, and that we reappoint Theodore Karfilius as an alternate. Some names. I know. Is, is that also for four years, or no?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that, okay, for, for four years ending January 2023. Why don't we reward him and make him a full-time member for the vacancy?
There is no.
The vacancy is for alternates.
The vacancy is for. And he's alternate A, correct? Yes, that's right.
Before we vote, could we clarify the term, is it 23 or 22?
It is.
He says it's four years, it's four years. 23, you said 22. Did I say 22? I apologize, I thought I said 23.
Okay, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just an observation, I'm willing to reappoint these people, but I have to tell you that the overall attendance for the planning commission in the modern community is not what it should be for a committee, a group that is tasked with doing some very important work for the township. And I would just like that Mr. Zook, perhaps, keep us apprised of that, there are people who are under 60% attendance, and the intent with banning alternates was to help when there were issues for recusing, not so that people could be absent. That's my opinion.
The only member of that perfect attendance was the alternate.
Yes, that's why I'm happy to put him back on.
Really, I didn't notice that, but yeah, he's mentioned.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is an appointment to the youth commission. Yes, the position that is open is actually Ms. Grasso's, if you recall, we actually appointed her in December, so this would actually be the first full term, so she actually hasn't even had a chance to participate in the youth commission. The, the other thing that I would point out to you is that Chief Grimes has expressed a problem with the attendance of Ms. Dallas, and has not been able to reach her to have a discussion about that. It's my recommendation that we vacate that position and seek someone else. Again, the thing with the youth commission is, this is a hands-on board in terms of actually doing activities, and, and it's important that it be staffed with members that are, that are active.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mrs. Christine Grasso to a new term that will, for three years, that will expire January 2022.
Awesome.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
I'd also like to make the motion that we remove Ms. Dallas from the youth commission, she has demonstrated a lack of interest, and we vacate that position effective immediately.
Second.
Now, I recall we had the same issue with a member of the planning commission a couple of years ago, and I think Mr. Smith had researched, and we concluded we didn't have any obligation under the township codes or ordinances to give notice to a board member before we removed them, right?
I would think the notice, though, is Chief Grimes trying to reach her.
Do you know the extent of all of the chief's efforts to contact her?
From what I understand, he's made numerous attempts to contact her.
I mean, in writing, verb?
I cannot tell you, I think it's verbally, I cannot tell you that he's written, written her. Well, her attendance is one out of six, so I'm not sure, we need to go above and beyond what the chief has done at this point, so. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Right, nay. Five two, Mr. Lauer.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but I'm just saying I think that we should have, we as township.
The township.
Should, should at least make that attempt before we take that action.
Yeah, I, I agree, I do think unless there's extenuating circumstances, she should be removed, but I'd like, we'd like to have additional information, because we had her on just about everyone else, so.
We just voted to open her, you know, she can certainly reapply if she wants, and she has a good reason, we can review that at that point. Next is an appointment to the zoning hearing board. There's one position that is up for appointment, and that position's currently held by Ms. Clark, she is seeking reappointment to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the reappointment of Catherine Clark to the zoning hearing board for a term that will expire January 2024, and I would note that she has perfect attendance.
She does, I will second that motion.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Note here on the manager's report, we have township council attendance from last year, kudos again, as to the second year in a row, nobody named Frank missed a meeting, and also.
I don't think.
You know why I'm here, I'm not going to say it on public television, but, oh. Mr. Ball also had perfect attendance, so kudos. We move on to miscellaneous reorganization.
Mr. Chairman, before we do, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Two-fold, we did talk about advertising for the positions that were vacant, could we ask, could I ask that you contact the candidates that we interviewed for youth commission most recently, and see if they're both interested, I do believe that we have, we have a consensus that one of those would be a good appointee.
Okay.
So we could, that might go quickly, and we won't have to necessarily re-interview.
Okay, does that make sense?
Second question I'd like to ask, we talked about all the other committees, do we have township-appointed representatives to make Murray Rotary into the Peters Chamber?
We have, the township is a member of the Rotary Club, we rotate representation there amongst the township staff at a departmental level, and so, yes, we are a member of the chamber, and one of the things that I had promised Brian is that we'll do a better job at attending his, his functions than we have in the past, so.
That would be good, thank you.
Okay, the next item is designation of official newspaper for 2019. Well, the township's official newspaper has been for quite some time the Observer Reporter, although we don't have rates for the upcoming year from the Observer Reporter, they don't exist yet, it is obvious that those rates will be substantially less than the Pittsburgh Post has had, and it's going to be my recommendation that the Observer Reporter be declared the official newspaper for legal importation. Second, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is establish dates and times for the regular council meetings for 2019.
I'll make a motion that we keep it as recommended, the second and fourth Mondays, except for May, which will do the 28th, which is a Tuesday, it's the 27th, because.
Yeah. And I. The reason why I don't have perfect attendance, I'm always gone that week.
And I'm assuming you want to move the meeting up in, in December, so that we're not on the week of Christmas.
Yeah.
So that would be a second.
No one wants to be here on the 23rd.
I'll second the motion that we move the two meetings for Memorial Day and the week of Christmas.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is renewal of municipal liens. There's no action required by council, one thing that I would note is that there's a significant drop in the amount of outstanding liens as a result of failure to pay garbage bills, and I think that's in large part reflection of the efforts that Jordan Tax Service has been putting into collecting these delinquent bills, so it's, it's like I say, it's a substantial reduction. Yeah, I was pretty surprised.
But we will continue to.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. There's no question that, there's no greater incentive to pay your garbage bill than having to worry about losing your house. Yes. Okay, next item is resolution establishing payroll deductions for the police pension plan for 2019. Under Act 600, the township has the right to, to mandate participation by employee, the police department employees in their pension plan, the amount of money that we're receiving from the state does not cover the cost of the plan, so therefore, as, has been the recent history, we're suggesting that the police officers contribute 5% to their cost of their, their pension.
I'll make a motion that we set the deduction at the maximum contribution of, what is it, 5%?
5%.
Pursuant to Resolution 01-01-19.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is appointment of representatives to the Washington County Sewage Council. Peters Township is a member of the Washington County Sewage Council, I know Mr. Jaworski enjoyed his, being the primary representative to that council last year, and I'm sure he would enjoy to be reappointed.
Well, I move that we reappoint Mr. Jaworski for this wonderful position, and Mr. Zook as his able alternate.
Sorry?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next is bank depository services status. There's no action needed now, our contract with PNC Bank runs through September of 2018. Okay, that concludes the reorganization portion of tonight's meeting, now move on to the regular meetings. First item on that agenda is minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting on December 17, 2018.
I move that we approve the minutes for December 17, 2018, that's the minute.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Now we come to the section of the meeting that is for audience comments, at this time, any member of the audience who wishes to speak on an non-agenda item can do so for five minutes, books.
Thank you, sir.
Let me just say, it is my honor for you to be our first speaker during my tenure.
Let me take my official line. Things are correct.
I just wanted to know what it felt like to be Jim Berkowitz for one night.
It's special.
I make it look easy, but it's hard to be.
Gentlemen, you've done it again. You know what's coming. You've elected another male board chairman. Mrs. Merrill served for, I don't know, a decade, Mr. Steigl's been around for a long time, Mr. Cosar, as far as I know, you've been here for maybe five, six years at most?
Four, actually.
Four, okay, you've been nominated and approved as the chairperson for our council, congratulations, but I think we're making some mistakes here, fellas, in that we're not recognizing women. Now, I only have to point to November's election to show you that a goodly number of women were nominated and won election to Congress. It's only reasonable that we should be thinking along the same lines, of the seven positions up there, eight positions, seven positions, only one is a woman. And as I say, she's been here long enough, by the way, I think she garnered more votes than anybody else on council the last election sequence. We should probably give her an opportunity. It's only for a year, and frankly, how much damage, if she chose to do that, could she do? The problem I find is that we're only promoting conflict by not recognizing, recognizing that women and their role in government is just as important as yours. I mean, very honestly, I'd be a first, a first-year law student, could come in here and take a look at the voting record on our appointment of council chair people, and make a pretty firm prima facie case for discrimination. appointment of council chair people and make a pretty firm prima facie case for discrimination. I'd like you to think about it. You've got a whole year to do that, but I really think we have to look at giving women an opportunity, not only to serve on boards, but also to chair our executive position here in council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Anyone else with a comment?
Ann Chainer, 123 Robin Hood Lane. I'm here also to make a statement that, once again, because I came here wanting to see if anybody would nominate Monica Merle, and also if you all would vote her in, and once again, you have disappointed. I think the audience here, Ann, people watching or who will watch, I think it's significant that we come here every year and you do the same thing. I don't know if it's a good old boys' club or what. Maybe you should change the council meeting to a different night because there is football on Monday nights. I had heard once that that was rumored to be the reason why you don't want Ms. Merle in the chairmanship. She may make the meetings too long because, as we can see here this evening, she is the one who asks the most questions. She is the one who makes the most comments. Some of you also do. Mr. Currie does. I'd say he's second in line. I think you should wonder why you're even here because all you can think about is getting here and leaving as quickly as you can.
That's not true.
Well, I think that it's come to the point where there has to be good justification by this council why you will not appoint a woman to the chairmanship. I think she has performed dutifully. She comes prepared. She asks legitimate questions, and I don't think any one of you could sit there and give me a good reason. If you can, please do so right now. Give me a good reason why this woman has never been appointed to the chairmanship or voted on. Mr. Cosar, I'm sure you're an honorable gentleman. Your peers elected you in, but you have not served. She's serving in, she's starting her 12th Now, if I had the power to do so, I would question your motives. You know, you can give a lot of time to other activities and things, so I think you need to give some thought and reason to why you refuse to appoint a woman or elect a woman into the chairmanship of this council. It may be just what we need. And certainly, Mr. Lewis, you cannot have such piercing eyes at me at this moment, okay? I am a constituent, so loosen up.
Good evening. My name is Carol Lee Kettalar, and I live at 103 Bethany Drive, and I've been a resident of Peter's Township for over 30 years now, and I would just like to add my voice to those who have spoken previously to urge you to consider having Monica Merrill serve as chairman of this council group. I appreciate all of your service. I appreciate all the time and effort that it takes each and every one of you to come to the meetings and to do the work that needs to be done, but I ask respectfully, when the next opportunity arises for you to put Monica on the chairmanship, please do so. The women of Peter's Township, you know, obviously I don't speak forever, all of the women, but it is important to us that we have representation and leadership on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank everyone who spoke on my behalf.
Thank you for the job you do. Thank all of you gentlemen. I've got to thank the lady. She's done a wonderful job in my experience.
Thank you for that. I do have to tell you that it has been a disappointment in the past, however. I feel that I've tried to do the best I can, and it doesn't matter whether I'm chair or not. I will do whatever I can to be the best council person, not just for the people who elect me, but for everyone, and I truly appreciate you all speaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business, of which there is none. We'll move on to new business. First item under new business is ordinance codifying the impact fee advisory committee.
So as councils aware, last year, we went back and visited, revisited the impact fee committee, and one of the things that we discovered in that process is that when the committee was created, there were no terms that were created for the business and development community members of that board. That board consists of the membership of the planning commission and three additional appointees, and so I think it's important that we establish terms so that in fact, you know, we're not having people serving on that board in perpetuity. So what is in front of you tonight is an ordinance that establishes the terms for those three positions as well as codifying the role of the planning commission on that board. The board would be a little unique in that it will actually have an even number of members. That's been true over its history. Our limited experience with this group is that they, they make decisions by consensus, and I don't really think that it having an even number poses a concern from, you know, from the standpoint of good government, so.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 838, amend chapter 241, part 12, impact fees advisory committee of the Code of Peter's Township.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. I asked Mr. Lauer prior to the meeting for a review of the municipal planning code. When I read that, it talked about a distribution of 40% of business people and 60% that could be the planning commission. I just wanted to ask him to clarify that in a form.
Sure, and it's been the township's position that 40% of the membership needs to be from the business or development community, but if you look at the backgrounds of the individuals who serve on the planning commission, it provides that additional person who has that background, so therefore we meet that requirement. The concern always was that if we had.
How many people do we have on the committee?
There's five.
Five on the planning commission and three additional members.
Oh, okay. I thought it was three, three.
Well, and the argument is that the business, the engineer group, Mr. Lauer is counting part of the planning commission who are business people and in engineering or construction or et cetera as part of the 40%.
Right.
And the 60%, and I, my only objection is that I don't know if you double count people if the numbers work. That was my question to you and whether or not we needed to add a fourth person so the numbers could be divided. So you're reading it as a different interpretation.
I believe the numbers do work.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next we move on to appointment of business community representatives to the IFA committee.
So there have been three members of the business community that have been serving on this committee, Mr. Schwitzer, Mr. Dolan, and Mr. Klaxen. They would all like to be reappointed. What we, in conjunction with the ordinance that has just been approved, we are recommending that Mr. Schwitzer be appointed for a one-year term expiring on January 1, 2020. Mr. Dolan's be appointed to a two-year term expiring on 2021, and Mr. Klaxen serve a term that expires on 2022.
I think the only issue out of this is this is the only group of appointments that I don't think have ever been interviewed, at least in my time on council, and, I mean, I've met Jim Dolan, I've met Arch Schwitzer, Kim Klaxen, I haven't been able to remember who he is.
I know, I know.
So I think it'd be nice to have him in here and just to talk to him before there is a reappointment.
And if you want us to arrange for interviews, we can do that. That's up to you.
I think it would be helpful. I do know Mr. Schwitzer. I actually know Mr. Klaxen. Don't really know Mr. Dolan, so I think, you know, there may be one or some of them that we know, that any of us may not know.
I know all three of them. I think they're all, these are all excellent choices and diversity within each one of their positions, so.
I know them all, too, so.
It's up to council what you want to do.
Here we have.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Arch Schwitzer for a term expiring January 1, 2020. Change Dolan to a term expiring January 1, 2021, and Kim Klaxen to a term expiring January 1, 2022.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Absolutely, ma'am. Please come forward and to the microphone, tell us your name and address.
I could just yell it out. It's Wendy Bowes. I love Arch Schwitzer, but I think you guys ought to have an age limit, just like directors in a company. I mean, your age limit, maybe make it 92. Because, okay, somebody in the audience should speak up because they know better than I do.
I don't think we could discriminate on the basis of age.
I suggest that they make a law that it be 92 maximum age for, just like you would for the championship.
They'll probably meet once or twice this year to review the status of the capital improvement plan and make a recommendation with regard to the fee.
And often they meet last year. Same thing, please.
Yeah, actually, I think they met once last year.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
Yeah, maybe to follow up on what Mrs. Merrill said, I mean, maybe we should have the solicitor give us a report as to whether the interpretation that seemed to be, your interpretation, I don't know what the interpretation is because I haven't looked at that language, but.
I can do that.
Why don't we just have them do that? Because, you know, if it's wrong and we need to appoint somebody else, that might, you know, that might eliminate or alleviate some of these issues.
And I have no problem with that. It's important that it be correct.
With a female on there. Because it looks like the five members of the planning commission, are there any women on this council?
Not right now after Miss Legowith's left.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the Tracy Plan of lots.
This is a simple subdivision. This is a 3.4 acre piece of property at 110 Country Brook Drive. They're seeking to subdivide the parcel into two lots. There is an existing home on the property.
Can you, do you have the package so you can check it?
This is the existing home that's on the property, but they want to do is to create a flag lot on this side of the property.
That's the old farmhouse, right?
Yes. So what they're proposing doing is to create a lot here and to build a house in this location. In fact, if council approves this, my recommendation is that one of the conditions be that the house be located in the rear of this property.
And where would the access to the residence come from?
It would come from a driveway off of the road here. There's 90 some feet of front.
Would it, would it come through there though? Was that a couple easements come through there?
Yeah, sanitary easement.
Wouldn't that make it kind of difficult to pave over that?
No, you get a driveway over top of it.
You know, I think the longer I'm on here, the more I seem to feel that Mr. Lewis's position with respect to these, I think it sure is, he's flag lots, I'm not real keen on.
This is not as bad as some of them.
No, it's not as bad. I have to say that.
I would, I would have to agree that flag lot lots are not a good thing. I think I support Mr. Lewis's opinion. I'm concerned about the irregular shape of that property, and I'm not sure that it's a simple subdivision. I raise some questions to investigate whether or not the property has actually already changed hands.
It hasn't. There's a, from what I understand, there's an agreement of sale or there is a listing that was on the basis of the fact that it was going to be subdivided, but this, there hasn't been a sale on the property or deed recorded. It's not uncommon that sales agreements and options and.
Usually the word used is contingent, not under contract.
Paul, I can't read it from here, but what is the width of that lot at the building line at the road?
It is.
91.5.
Yep.
Okay, so with, and you have to have 50 feet for a driveway, correct?
And what's the width of that pinch point right there?
Oh, that's pretty narrow there.
Because of.
Forty plus 15.
There's 15 foot variances on the driveways on either side. So what's the width there?
There's 40.
There's plenty of room. There's plenty of room to get a driveway through there without.
55.
So that's 55 at the pinch point, right?
Yes. Yes, because it's 40, if this, this, this line right here indicates that it's 40 feet and you've got a 50 yard, 15 foot side door to it.
Well, my only concern was I want to make sure that in a few years they're not back here trying to get another subdivision to put a house on that piece there.
Well, and again, that's why.
With the 15, with the 50 foot right away.
Well, technically, they could, they could build another one in the back.
Well, they can't build one. If there's a 50 foot right away there, you've only got 41.5 feet there to the width of the lot in front there. That was my concern.
About on the 1.6, what's left in the back.
No, this is in fact where they want to build the home, and I think you should restrict it that the home is built in the back of the property.
Is that the conditions proposed by the planning commission?
Yes, it's already on the recorded.
Could I ask?
The location of the house?
One house, and it cannot, no, be subdivided.
Now, that's going to be, that'll be a condition we should add that there's no further subdivision.
Well, there's no way to subdivide it anymore.
Can I ask another question about the potential building? Normally, there's a square footage based on the total acreage.
It's covered by the 15% lot coverage.
That particular, if you would put that picture back up, that particular piece that's irregular looks like it would be very constraining to size. Do we need to say anything about that? Because I don't know that I'd want to think that there would be further variances being.
I don't think this is very constraining to size because, you know, here's, here's the setback lines. This is actually a large piece of property.
Yeah, that's 1.6 acres.
I understand that, but you've seen some of the houses that are being built. I have no idea what the plan is. I'm just concerned that I would not want to then have variances coming in for a house, a pool, or whatever else.
And I wouldn't think that they would be needed, but you cannot, as a, as a condition of a subdivision prohibit someone for requesting a variance.
I'm not saying I would prohibit it. I'm just suggesting that it might have constraints based on the irregular shape of the remaining lot. Could you?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this Tracy Plan, subdivision Tracy Plan of lots, subject to the conditions established by the planning commission after December 12, 2018 meeting, and in addition, that the property could not be subdivided further.
Second. Do a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next we move on to correspondence. Anything we need to deal with on correspondence, Mr. Lauer? Next is payroll and bills. As my final act as vice chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills, found them to be in order. I'll make a motion that we approve the same. Second. Do a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Those say nay. Seven-zero, Mr. Lauer. Does any member of council have any comments to any of the various board minutes?
I did, 100. 100.
Next, we'll move on to miscellaneous. First thing there is the Joint Council School Board Annual Workshop, and that is scheduled for February 4th at our location. If any member of council has an item that they would like to see on that agenda, if you can drop me an email or give me a call.
I did have a question about the zoning hearing board report.
Okay, so we're done with that?
Yeah. I'm sorry, did we get there or are we already on the annual school board? Are we beyond the zoning hearing board?
No.
Oh, that's all right. Because the way, it looks like on here we are, but.
Anyone else have any comments on the Joint Council School Board Workshop?
No, just looking to see what my council says. I'm good.
Mr. R.
I just was wondering if you, if you guys have any kind of presentation to show us with the, it looks like they're, he's seeking variance for three flag lots and 25-foot variance to the minimum required width, and I'd like to see what those are.
And we're going to show you that, so.
Not that I'm opposed, but I just.
No, and one of the things that we had promised is that going forward, we would provide council on a regular basis, a report that tells you what zoning hearing board has decided the previous month and what issues are in front of them. So the issue in front of the zoning hearing board right now is a variance request to provide for three flag lots at the end of Golden Eagle Drive. So if you recall, when we were in the process of rezoning, there was a real concern about what was going to happen with this piece of property that is off of this cul-de-sac and whether or not this would be a housing development. And there was real concern from the residents along this drive because when they bought those homes, they were under the understanding that there would be limited development at the end of that cul-de-sac. So there already exists one flag lot, and what Mr. Taylor is proposing to do is to create two more flag lots in this area. And these would be, this orientation's a little bit different, but these would be two substantially sized flag lots in addition to the one that already exists. That is contrary to what the ordinance provides, which indicates that there can only be two flag lots at the end of a cul-de-sac. So that's why there's a request for a variance. You know, my guess is that the neighborhood is going to be very supportive of this. At the same time, when you look at this strictly as a, you know, the criteria for granting variances, it's, it's hard to understand where the hardship is here is. So it's going to be, you know, an interesting decision for the zoning hearing board to make. I don't know whether council has a position on this one way or the other.
Is that three separate driveways then that would be?
Yes. Well, it's actually two. It's two because this driveway here, this space here is actually going to be a shared driveway to here and to here.
So it's going to be like a front one and a back one?
There's going to be, there's going to be this driveway, and there's going to be a driveway kind of like where this location is here, which will be shared by this property owner and this property owner.
I thought we had an issue with, I thought we had an issue with shared driveways.
No.
No. That surprises me because I thought we did too.
How big are, how big's each lot proposed to be?
One lot is 3.8 acres, the other is 10.6 plus.
Wow.
And he's proposing to sell those to different people?
Yes.
Who will agree to have a shared driveway?
They have no choice.
Well, no, I'm saying, does the township fair any involvement in that one? So he just needs to take care of whatever paperwork.
What was that issue with the house on East McMurray Road where they had a shared driveway?
I remember.
I think that was Tony.
Yeah.
Copka?
Yes.
Do you want me to call you any issue with the shared driveway?
I could have dreamt it.
Was that the one where he was taking building materials?
No, no, he had re, he had re, he had re, remodeled the home. And there was a shared driveway there.
This won't be the only shared driveway.
You remember everything to do with fantasy football. You don't remember this?
It's not, it's confusing, it looks like, no. Okay, well.
All right. Does anyone else recall this conversation?
Yeah, I think that was before my time.
All right.
You have a hand in the audience. Do you have a suggestion?
To come forward.
We got to come up.
Name where you live.
June Wagner 150 Thomas Road wasn't in this township, but I used to share a driveway, and there was an agreement between the two property owners to share the cost of that common driveway. Simple.
Sure. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would, would the 10-acre flag lot be subject to further?
No, we have our staff at court prepared, and one of the recommendations is that there be a condition on the subdivision that be no further subdivision, period.
What I'm just saying is, what's, what's past all that? Is that like a hill or is that still level? I mean, is that something that might be developed in the future?
It's land that's not owned by Mr. Taylor that could potentially.
It's somebody else's land?
Correct.
It could be developed?
Correct.
Well, you know.
So that makes the question, we always say that cul-de-sacs could be extended.
Well, yeah, but I don't see how you can extend it.
Well, now, I'm asking, how would, how would that happen in this?
There's no permitting cul-de-sac. There is no plans now or in the future to extend that cul-de-sac anyway.
Okay, so the land that you're talking about that is not Mr. Taylor's is not adjacent to the cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Okay, I misunderstood when you brought that up.
Well, I guess it wouldn't really matter. I mean, if somebody bought the 10 acres and, and somebody on the other down, the other property owner wanted to develop, and they wanted to run a road up to that 10 acres, and they wanted to subdivide that, who are we to say? Other than, you know, the private drive would obviously could not be a thoroughfare, but.
I think what you'd have to say is that there could be no further subdivision and any new lots created that would.
Burn the shared, yeah. I wouldn't have a problem doing that. That would be okay with me. I don't care if they, I mean, because if, if you could, you know, 10 acres, they might be able to build a few more houses and connect money when the tax.
There's a solution for the long run.
Yeah, because there's no way you could put a road down there.
I would say that folks that we've met with that live in that immediate area are, which is where they usually are.
They're in favor.
Believe that they know that this is the ultimate way in which this land behind their homes is going to be developed.
But the only question in front of council, but I think, do you want to take a decision from the zoning hearing board with regard to this? Or do you want to lead the zoning hearing board to make that decision on their own?
Well, I, I don't want, I mean.
Well, they make the decision on their own.
Yeah, I think you'd love to make the decision on their own. I'm just saying that I, I think they're smart enough to figure out that they want to make it non, that it can't be subdivided. I would prefer that it be the non-burden that like Mr. Cozer said, but not burden the shared driveway because if, for some reason, you could put two or three more houses, that would obviously help the tax base.
Well, maybe you'll put more houses in that because, I mean, tell them 2 acres if you put a house on one end, and you have 8 acres that you could reach from the other side, I mean, that's 10 more houses.
So maybe Mr. Zook can just communicate, I mean, council's given a lot of concerns, so if you communicate those.
Yeah, it might be easier with.
Thank you.
For close, maybe more tactically.
Is there anything that any member of council would like to see on the agenda for the next meeting?
I'm sorry, could we go, not move off of miscellaneous? I have two questions. I did not drive by the firehouse at Sugar Camp at Beep Off tonight, but as of yesterday, the flag was still missing.
The, the reason it's missing is that that flag pole is an old piece of gas piping.
Oh, my.
It is cracked.
Oh, my.
The fire department's been authorized to replace that with a real flag pole.
Okay, good. Second question about the beginning of December, maybe the end of November, I sent an email asking about three concerns related to traffic, and I don't know whether or not you had an opportunity. One was a report of a lot of issues with the pedestrian crosswalk in Donaldson's Crossroads, right where the atrium is, where people cross back and forth for the little gym. People don't really observe the pedestrian crossing sign and stop, and have some reports of people almost getting hit. I've seen it myself. I've seen people trying to beat the light cutting through and just whipping through that area. That was one concern.
And that's a, you know, that's a private development.
I understand.
And there's little we can do with regard to, you know, improvements on the.
Well, but if they're coming in at some point with first site plan, then I think that's something we do need to investigate. I know my daughter and I were almost hit a couple of times too coming out of the little gym because despite the fact that you have those three purported speed bumps there, it doesn't really seem to help when people are coming up the hill, you know? And the way that exit is, I mean, you're essentially right on the crest of the hill as you're coming out of the building.
Which, which one, where's the little gym, the CrossFit Shopping Center? Oh, when you're coming up.
Right up on the back.
Yes.
Excuse the citizen's day.
Well, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt if they painted those speed bumps too because then you could see them. I think they're all black down that area.
Wouldn't it be helpful if, could we ask that they maybe put one of those flashing lights on the top of the pedestrian sign?
Well, we will be talking the owner of the shopping center very shortly because of the work that they intend to do around there.
Okay, speaking of flashing lights, a while back, there was a crosswalk with a flashing light at McNary, and I wondered what happened to that. It's disappeared since the road was repaid.
And I will raise this again with PennDOT, but PennDOT has told us that, that it's not part of their permitted controls on that road, but I will raise that with them again.
So much for a walkable community. Last question. I have received a number of phone calls from people sitting in traffic at Donaldson's Crossroads intersection because someone again divided the no-left turn into CBS. And I think we're very much interested in doing all this synchronizing the traffic lights and making everything work, but all it takes is one person to go off that whole process.
Exactly. Well, I think it ought to be punishable by death.
Well, one of the things that.
Can't we talk to them?
Well, we, we were talking on a staff level about this, and with, with council's approval, I was going to send a letter to PennDOT requesting that there be a physical barrier so that there would be like a mountable curb so that you could not make that turn.
There's a room, there's a room for that?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, but then we'll go back where the old drive-through is and make that last.
Well, and that one is, is actually one that's.
There's probably a left sometimes.
That one is permitted.
That's permitted.
That's what I'm saying, maybe that's, that would be the good alternative.
That would be the easier way to do it. And you could paint that area so people don't pull through it. Anyway, thank you for following up.
That's just too.
Anyone else have anything on miscellaneous? Any council member have anything they want to see on the next meeting agenda?
Recycling. Everyone's talking about the issues with glass. Maybe we need to have a conversation about that.
Sure. This is a lot of other municipalities that are in the news.
Everyone's in the same boat.
Absolutely.
This is not just.
Anybody figure out, any way to go with any of those other areas?
South Hills Council Government is looking at the possibility of creating drop-off locations for glass, which I thought was kind of interesting because when they did a survey, there's a lot of interest in, in accommodating, you know, having that. No one wants to have that in their community because drop-off centers create challenges. So.
Well, if they want to buy, what good's dropping it off?
Oh, I think you can, I think there's a market for glass.
It's the contamination of the glass, but with the single stream recycling.
Right, it's a problem because it's missed, but there are, are absolute markets for that.
Yes.
And then another thing for next agenda, could we have a conversation about the ambulance authority before we decide to cut that check?
Well, that check doesn't get cut for a while, and one of the things that I will be doing this week is to schedule a meeting with the.
Thank you.
I had called Mr. Lauer today to inquire about potential ordinance. It may take a while to figure out the legal regarding rental properties in, in, in the township. There was just incident in my neighborhood where the house is being rented, the people were gone all Christmas, and they came back and someone had broken into the house and had taken all of their tools and equipment. So I, I, I'm just interested in seeing if we can put a requirement to have perhaps a security system requirement if you rent a house, or at least make sure that they have proper fire detectors in the home. What are the other detectors? CO2?
Carbon monoxide.
Carbon monoxide, just to make sure that, you know, we don't have something. These homes are being rented, and we, don't we require that for apartments? That they have, you know, fire suppression equipment, fire alarms?
At the point of.
I hope so.
At the point of construction, that's true, but just as there is not with, with owner-occupied homes, there are no inspections of rental properties after, after the building has been constructed.
Yeah, but there could be.
Oh, no, there could be.
Washington Kent Township, I got one of those once.
But at least a simple.
They have inspections annually, and they pay a fee and that kind of stuff.
You know, I would support Mr. Burghuis' request. I've asked on numerous occasions about rental properties, not specifically about that, but just getting a handle on if people are living there, if they're paying our income tax to the township, you know, how, how do we even know which are rental, which are owned? And technically, in my mind, if it's a rental property, it's a business, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if we have any VRBOs or.
We do.
What's the other one?
Air.
Airbnb's. If I'm not mistaken, I've read where other communities have put some requirements on those types of rental units as well. So that's just my, my inquiry, kind of a public safety issue in my vision.
There's an ordinance or something in New York City I discovered today, something about.
What's that for?
In New York City, they have some kind of an ordinance about, you know, 30 days, you have to like rent for like 30 days or something like that.
Yeah, they've instituted some programs still, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, this probably has somebody looking at some options, and maybe we could have a little workshop or something as to what various options could be.
Well, most of the municipalities that are doing that now are in the eastern part of the state, the Poconos and that area. You see a lot of that there because people have their vacation houses, they're renting out an Airbnb for the balance of the year when they're not there, although I think it probably is something we should take a look at.
Last time I checked, there were, there were no listings in meters.
There were what?
Last time I checked, there were no listings in meters.
The leases because I think Mr. Burghuis and Mrs. Merrill raised a valid point. We might, A, be losing tax, wanting income or an income, and B, I mean, we should at least have some kind of, make sure we lease these places, you know?
As an example, we do have an ordinance where only four non-related people can live in a, a home, and I discovered this, and yet we have no way to check and find out how many people are indeed living in a rental home.
Well, that's a.
That makes no sense to me.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for the next agenda? Anyone else have anything for the good of the order?
Mr. Cozer, I will save the township some legal funds. I, I had the MPC pulled up during that discussion about the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The governing body, the municipality, may elect the planning commission as the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. If the existing planning commission does not include members of the real estate, commercial, and residential development, building industries, at no less than 40% membership, the governing body can appoint sufficient number of representatives of the aforementioned industries who reside in the municipality or conduct business in the municipality to serve as ad hoc voting members when the planning commission functions as the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So the question is, yes, you can count members of the planning commission who work in those industries toward that 40%.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dr.[1781.83]